All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Fruita City Council meeting. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counselor Buck will be here, but she is running late. Counselor Lenhart?
Here.
Counselor Harvey?
Here.
Counselor Cry?
Here.
Counselor O'Brien? Counselor Bremen?
All right, if you'd all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have an addition of proclamation. Under Section Four, there is a secondary proclamation for Fruita Pride Fest that was just added today.
All right. Anything else?
No other changes.
All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the agenda as amended.
A little second.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we're going to move into our proclamations and presentations. Again, we've got two of those tonight. Our first one is proclaiming September 2021 as Hunger Action Month in the city of Fruita. And I've asked Ken to read that for us.
Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Colorado, where 12.5% of people face hunger in Colorado. And one in every seven children do not know where their next meal will come from. And whereas the city of Fruita, Colorado is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community and to provide additional resources that those in the Western Slope need. And whereas the city of Fruita, Colorado, is committed to working with Food Bank of the Rockies, a member of the Feeding America Nationwide Network of Food Banks is educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas more than 130,000 individuals in the Western Slope rely on food provided by the members of the Food Bank of the Rockies annually. And whereas the coronavirus pandemic has had devastating health and economic impacts across the country, and is projected that 46,390 people face hunger in the Western Slope in the wake of pandemic this year. And whereas the members of Food Bank of the Rockies Western Slope Center distributed more than 16.5 million meals to over 400,463 individuals since 2020 through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. And whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to engage the public in action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to ensure nobody has to make an impossible choice between food and other necessities like medicine, utilities, or childcare. And whereas food banks across the country, including the members of the Food Bank of the Rockies in the Western Slope, will host numerous engagement opportunities throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their local community.
All right, thank you, Ken. It looks like Sue Ellen Rodwick and Gabrielle Garayar, is that how you say it? I close. If you guys want to come up and say a few words, and then we've got your proclamation for you.
I should finish. I forgot to proclaim. Now, therefore, Joel Kincaid, Mayor of Fruita, hereby recognizes September 2021 as Hunger Action Month in our city of Fruita, Colorado, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens.
Thank you, guys, for this proclamation. We're really thankful for the involvement with the city of Fruita, involvement with our food box distribution every month to our older adults, which continues to grow, and just such tremendous support from our community and from this group right here. So, thank you very much.
Did Gabrielle want to say anything?
Sure. Just as Sue Ellen said, we're just so grateful for your support and just recognizing how many folks face food insecurity day in and day out. And just, you know, steps like this is really going to help break that barrier that so many people face and why they face food insecurity. And we're just hoping that together we can continue to close that meal gap for our community. So, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. All right, and then our second proclamation is proclaiming September 7th to 12th, 2021 as Fruita Pride Fest in the city of Fruita. And I've asked Heather to read that one.
Whereas Colorado West Pride was established nine years ago and is dedicated to the creation of inclusive community in Fruita through events, outreach, and education. And whereas the Colorado West Pride Board has now seven members, which represent the depth and breadth of the local lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community. And whereas Colorado West Pride works tirelessly to help create equality by working to make sure the community is well-informed and the LGBTQ community has a voice to make a difference. And whereas Colorado West Pride will sponsor various activities and events September 7th through 12th to promote and build a positive environment and relationships. And whereas on September 11th and 12th, Colorado West Pride will host the signature event of the Ninth Annual Grand Junction Pride Fest, which will include a Main Street parade on Sunday and a festival at the Grand Junction Convention Center on Saturday and Sunday. Now, therefore, we, the Fruita City Council, on behalf of the mayor and the city of Fruita, do proclaim September 7th through 12th, 2021, as Fruita Pride Fest in the city of Fruita, and urge all citizens to learn and help create a positive environment for the LGBTQ community.
All right, thank you, Heather. And I think we've got Jared Prock now. Is that... Hopefully, I'm saying that right. Come on up.
On behalf of Colorado's Pride, we really appreciate this opportunity to have the proclamation, as well as the opportunity to be represented specifically in Fruita. The organization has been around for actually over 12 years. This is our ninth annual Pride festivities. And we're super excited to kind of host a few events last year with COVID. We didn't really get to have anything. So this year kind of means an extra little bit. Normally, the Pride festivities are in June. This year, we moved it to September, just to kind of help with COVID and kind of help with some of those numbers. So this opportunity to be represented not only in Grand Junction, but also in Fruita. And we did a proclamation in Palisade as well, really helps to kind of spread the message and kind of help with the advocacy that we do throughout the valley. So we appreciate this opportunity.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public participation. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. So generally, the city council will not discuss the issue and will not take an official action under this section of the agenda. We'd ask that you'd limit your comments to three-minute periods. So is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? If you'd step up and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Matt Barber. I live at 334 Crystal Court and just wanted to take a second to pray for you all as leaders and also pray for our community. So Father God, thank you so much for today. Thank you for this opportunity to be involved in the government that you have set forth before us. Thank you for the blessing that it is to live in a country like this, where you have given us so many rights and privileges and just blessings that so many others in this world do not get a chance to enjoy. I thank you for the men and women on this council. Father, for the government that you have placed before us, thank you for their willingness to serve. Thank you for their willingness to serve, not just when things are easy or when they're good. But Father, when they are difficult, when they're trying, and when it requires a lot more from them than they might have expected when they took on these positions. I just ask that you would give them a great deal of wisdom as they lead this community. Father, give them a, just an intuition of what should be taking place. And Father, not just a wisdom, but a courage and a bravery to do what is right, to stand by their convictions, to stand by the decisions that they've made as they lead this community. And I thank you so much for the city of Fruita, for blessing us to live in this outstanding place. Thank you for giving us so many blessings that so many other communities in this valley, in this state, in this country, in this world, do not enjoy. I just ask that this community would be a, just a light to the rest of our world. Father, to the rest of Mesa County and to our state, that we would be able to be an example of encouragement, of life. Father, just of blessing. We thank you so much for taking care of us, as you have over the last couple of years. And we just trust that you will continue to do so, and in large part by the service of these men and women. Love and pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, we're going to close public participation and bring it back to consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt, please?
Yes.
Before we go into the consent agenda, I made a slight error in that the Food Bank of the Rockies did have a short presentation that they wanted to give the council.
Okay.
Would that be all right if they do that?
Yeah, let's do that now, then.
Okay.
Because that would be, that we should have done that during presentations, but that's all right.
Yeah, that was my fault. I'm sorry.
It's all right. I'm just following orders, that's all.
Waiting for that, by the way, Leshanat Tovah. Happy New Year, everybody.
Same to you.
782. It's going to be a good year. We go way back to old school.
Yeah. My name is better than 2020, so. We should have the Jeopardy theme plane or something for Shannon over there.
Do you want me to just turn the timer on for that?
Turn the timer on. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Tell Sue Ellen it's eaten into her 10 minute presentation.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not a mic's time. Job's time, she talks so much.
Yeah. I want your photo album, where you can actually turn pages.
All right.
You got the little black things that you put in the corners and...
Stick before you get splinters in your tongue.
We're waiting on Shannon, that's all.
He does his best.
Well, we wanted to use this opportunity to present to the city council a big project that we have on our plate. Just the... Just to give background, Food Bank of the Rockies was founded in 1978. We cover all of Wyoming and most of northern Colorado. The Western Slope Distribution Center was established in 1998. And we have over 136 partners. That includes locally the Canyon West Food Distribution, Gape, downstairs, Victory Life, and then our distribution here in Fruita. We get food from a variety of different resources, from food rescue, from places like City Market here in Fruita, to donations from manufacturers, and we also purchase from local growers. Overall, one in eight adults and one in seven children face food insecurity in the state of Colorado. And especially during the pandemic, we saw the most increase in need across the state here in the Western Slope. To give an idea of what that looks like is, since 2020, distributing 20 million pounds to the 12 counties that we cover. The next slide is the 12 counties that we do cover and give some details on how many low-income and food insecure people that we see in our entire region. And one highlight that we saw is that an average meal in this region costs 18% more than the national average. That's just, that's just one factor that contributes to food insecurity. So our challenge is that we're outgrowing our space. We currently have a warehouse in Palisade. We moved there in 2013 and thought that was going to be good for a long time. And even before the pandemic, we had already outgrown the space. So as you can see, in 2020, which is the last year, we set a record of distributing over 12.5 million pounds out of one dock warehouse in Palisade. Focusing on Mesa County, this shows our distribution by county. Mesa, by far the largest, the meal distribution. And we do a lot here in the community. We're part of the Mesa County Blueprint and Hunger, and working with several key partners. And then this is just a picture of our, next, that picture of our facility in Palisade. It's the largest, I believe it's the largest commercial space that they have there in Palisade. Highlight one person's story is, and this is really typical of what we hear, is people that weren't food insecure before the pandemic suddenly are coming and receiving food assistance. And that's, that's a picture of our Fruita distribution over at Little Salt Wash. So we have, for 23 years, we've been in part of the community, helping meet the needs. And we want to continue being able to do that. So we are going to be building a new distribution center. It will be located at 23 and G Road. So you see the roundabout up in the upper hand corner will be just south of the FedEx Ground facility. We'll be increasing the size of our facility by 84%. And we project by the 2027, we'll be distributing 16.8 million pounds of food through that facility. We'll be located in Grand Junction, closer to our partners, easier access to the interstate, closer to Fruita. And then we're also excited because we're going to be partnering with St. Mary's Meals on Wheels, or formerly known as Gray Gourmet. They are also challenged with their space, so this will give them access to a larger facility for that. So these are some, next few slides are some artist renderings from our local Chamberlain Architects that are helping us with this project. Our beautiful lobby, meant to be a really welcoming space for our community. We'll have a shared conference space, which will be available to our partners, and a large volunteer space. It'll be actually larger than our Denver's facility. This just gives the overall blueprint, showing that the purple is the dry storage space. Our, the turquoise blue and the dark blue are cooler and freezer. Orange is the office space. The gray is going to be the staging area, so it's, it's going to be, make quite a difference for us. Overall, our increase in space, what contributes to that 84% increase? The largest increase is going to be our cooler space, which will be growing by 400%. That means we'll be able to purchase more local produce is, and other fresh items and distribute that throughout the Western Slope. Last year, we distributed over 30% of our, what we distributed was fresh produce, and we want that to be over 40%. Next, the next slide is focusing on our commercial kitchen, which is, will be new for us in the facility, which will enable Meals on Wheels to be able to grow their, what they're able to do. We'll have more office space we'll be sharing with Meals on Wheels. And then, as I mentioned, a large volunteer space. This slide shows where our food is going out to. So the blue is just our core food distribution. That's the most. And then the orange is the second largest. That's the emergency food support. That comes from the USDA. And green is our mobile pantries. We distribute quite a lot of food through our semi-trucks going into communities and distributing food as needed. We've increased, we've more than doubled our mobile pantries during the pandemic. And, and continue to see a lot of higher numbers than pre-COVID. Focusing on St. Mary's, right now, they're able to serve 600 hot meals every day. And that is an increase of 25% pre-COVID. So they are on track to serve 200,000 meals in Mesa County by the end of 2021. Sharing the space is going to reduce our overhead costs. And then it's also going to create an opportunity for collective work among partners in preparing meals for after-school meal programs or other areas, so. The next slide goes into detail. The next couple of slides address the Mesa County Blueprint and Hunger, and how we are working in partnership with that for both partnering with Meals on Wheels and our Produce Fresh program. And next, I'll highlight another story. Another story from one of our mobile pantries is a woman who's really relying on our food distribution to keep her family fed, and she's so thankful for that. So we're, we're living in a challenging time and a season that we'll always remember. We set a record for this, this past fiscal year. And we're not foreseeing going back to normal. I think we're all figuring that out, that food insecurity is going to rebound slowly. In the Great Recession, it took 10 years to get back to what it was before. So we are going to be here. We're going to provide nourishing food with dignity for as long as it takes. And just looking at the figures for this building, it will, we estimate it will cost $8.8 million. That's for the purchase of the land and for the building. And then our building, current building is under contract for under $2 million, so that will offset the costs. And, and then we're also projecting we're going to receive new market tax credits, which will contribute about 1.3 million towards that. So we're, we're coming to the community for support of 5.5 million. Right now, looking for those leadership gifts in it towards that effort. And that's... Yeah, we can... The last slide, again, just emphasizes that each, each person that we encounter plays a critical role in us being able to provide nourishing food. And I keep looking at Karen and, and just what she's, you know, during the summer, she was there, dedicated, serving as a volunteer, and that's a huge part of what we're able to do, is people helping out. And we're, we're here, we're part of the community, and we were ready to be able to do even more through our new facility.
All right, well, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I have one question, so.
Yes.
You got a contract for your current building. Are you staying in that until the new one's built?
Yes. Thankfully, it's one of our neighbors that's going to be purchasing the building, so we'll be leasing back the facility until we're able to move out. So, yes.
What's the timeline for the new building?
We're estimating at the latest, we'll be in the new building by June. Yeah, so about 10 months. So crossing our finger, praying for lots of snow this, this winter, but not enough to keep us from building. We did, our building is a pre- prefabricated metal building, and that's coming, being shipped from Utah. So the warehouse portion will be a fairly quick build, and then, and then adding the office space onto that, so. Yeah.
Other questions?
I have a quick one. You said that food is on our side of the hill 18% greater than...
Yeah, the cost per meal, yes, compared to the nationwide. Yeah, and you know, the best guess that I have is a lot has to do with transportation. It's just more challenging to get food to this location, so. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I just want to thank you for all you do. I teach at Central High, where we have our own little food banquet twice a month. And I see the need, and, and so thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you. We, we're very thankful for the creative partnerships and... Yeah, wouldn't have imagined a couple of years ago that Central would become one of our largest food distributions.
Busy, busy, yeah.
Thank you.
Walk in the middle, Lori.
So Lori, did you have any questions for Sue Ellen? All right, any, any other questions? Well, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you for listening and letting us have the opportunity to be here.
All right, with that, I'm going to look over at staff. Can I get back on track now? No.
I'll get him later.
Yeah. All right, we're going to move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. These items we approve by a single motion of the council. And so with this, we're going to open up our consent agenda to public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on anything on the consent agenda? I don't see anybody either, Lou. So with that, we're going to close a public comment and bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions, or do we have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda as stated, as written.
Second, can you?
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public hearings. We've got one legislative and four quasi-judicial hearings tonight. So our first one is our legislative hearing, which is Resolution 2021-22, a request to approve a resolution amending the 2021 budget with a supplemental appropriation of grant funds and planning fees for completion of a post-impact fee study, and a few other things. So Margaret's going to explain all that to us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. On the consent agenda, you approved a contingency transfer for matching funds for some of these grants that we're talking about here. But we received a dollar grant for a post-impact fee study of $10,000, and we're providing matching funds of $10,000 to get out there and do an impact fee study for the parks, space, and trails fees, so that we can move forward on that fee. We also have a $5,000 grant from the Associated Governments Northwest Colorado to assist with our compensation plan and pay plan consultant to come in and just give us some tweaks on the organization and the structure of the pay plan. And the last item that we have under the general fund is personnel costs for planning. A year this year converted the part-time code enforcement position to a full-time position, combined with some planning activities to meet the needs in that department. And there are sufficient funds from the charges that are charged by Planning Department to cover that additional cost. We also have an additional $15,000 appropriation of Fleet Maintenance Fund. Under the Contingency Budget Amendment, you appropriated $15,000 from contingency to make a transfer into the Fleet Maintenance Fund. And this is for, excuse me, some sweeper repairs, I think it's, oh, excuse me, Skid steer unit, engine block repairs. This was originally scheduled for 2020, but because of supply shortages and not being able to get the parts, it lapsed over, and we're just not getting those parts in 2021. So you did a budget amendment, if it sounds familiar, you did a budget amendment at the end of 2020, but we weren't able to procure those parts in 2020, so we're redoing it here in 2021. Um, but we weren't able to procure those parts in twenty twenty, so we're redoing it here in twenty twenty-one. There's any specific questions? I'll try and respond to those.
All we're gonna do is we'll open it up to public comment. So we're gonna open this up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Lori?
Just a question about the salary or the, I guess the salary um, study. Is it just salary only or are, is like retirement gonna be included in that?
It's really just compensation. I mean, I'm sure the, the consultant would give us some feedback on some of our benefit packages, but it's primarily the just final touches on the compensation.
Yeah, this is, this is to have, um, we submitted a grant to have a professional consultant come in and help button up the final pieces of the pay plan structure that we've been working on for the past two and a half to three years. Internally, we're doing, uh, we do surveys every, we did one last year and we do one every couple of years to relook at our whole benefit package. So retirement's one of those aspects that we're looking at.
We should have a question on the motion. Which is that the motion presented, it's for sewer fund, transferring out of sewer in general, but it says sewer lifts, station repairs, vehicle repairs, and impact fee study.
Are you looking at the contingency budget amendment?
Am I looking at the wrong one?
You may be.
Cause it should be for the fourteen, five.
It doesn't say adopt resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty-two?
No, it says, it's got twenty twenty-one on it.
Yeah, you're looking at the wrong cover sheet there.
Twenty twenty-one dash.
That one, that one was approved on the consent agenda.
I move, we adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two. Many twenty twenty-one budget and appropriating additional revenues from grant funds and planning fees in the general fund for a post-impact fee study, compensation plan study and personnel costs. And appropriating additional revenues from vehicle repair charges in the fleet maintenance fund for mobile equipment repairs and maintenance.
Second.
Council O'Brien?
I was just looking at the wrong.
Yes.
Bremen?
Now that I'm looking at the right one, yes.
Council Buck?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Cry?
Yes.
Council Leonhart?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
With that, we're gonna move into our quasi judicial hearings. Uh, so the first one we have is a, a request to approve a special event liquor permit application from the Fruit of Rotary Club uh, to sell beer at the Fruit of Fall Festival on Saturday, September twenty-fifth. Uh, Deb's gonna be presenting on this.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, this is Deb Woods, Deputy City Clerk for the City of Fruta. Presenting the Rotary's application for special event liquor permit to sell beer at Civic Center Memorial Park uh, on Saturday, September twenty-fifth from ten AM to ten PM. Your council packet contains all the documents provided by the Rotary that are required to obtain a special event liquor permit. Including an event narrative, a diagram of licensed premises, a memorandum from the Fruit of Police Department that states there is nothing which would prohibit the issuance of the license requested. The public hearing for this application was both published in the Daily Sentinel and posted at the location of the event on August twenty-seventh. Staff recommends approval of the Rotary Club's application subject to the following conditions. One, that Rotary will discontinue selling beer at nine thirty PM and the beer will be secured and removed by ten PM. Rotarians will monitor the entrances and exits to the licensed premises to ensure that no alcohol leaves or enters the licensed area. And three, that Rotary needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for adherence to uh, alcohol possession, consumption uh, of both state and municipal liquor laws. That concludes my presentation. Uh, the applicant's representative, Rotarian Lou Mudd is here tonight.
I'm Lou Mudd, I live at one twenty-six South Maple Street, and I'm a member of the Fruit Rotary Club. I have been submitting these permits for uh, selling beer at these festivals in Fruta for a number of years. We have a really good track record for uh, crowd control. In fact, uh, the festivals in Fruta are, are pretty um, tame. People come to enjoy the evening and have a couple beers. Um, it's not typically something where people come to have overconsumption of alcohol. We're pretty careful about making sure that uh, nobody gets overly intoxicated or um, violent in any manner in the, in those events. Um, and it's a, selling beer is the major fundraiser that our Rotary Club does. It allows us to uh, make contributions to, like we did to Dave, to the Kids Backpack uh, Food Program. The food banks in the area, um, just any number of things. Um, so we appreciate your consideration and approval when, when it comes around. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Lou. All right, with that, we're gonna open this up for uh, public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back to council. Are there any questions, comments?
I'm, I'll recuse myself, since I'm a member of the club.
All right. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the application for a special event liquor permit for the Fruit of Rotary Club to sell beer during the Fruit of Fall Festival at Civic Center Memorial Park located at three twenty-five East Aspen Avenue on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one from ten AM to ten PM, subject to the conditions stated in the staff report.
Second.
Council Cry?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Council Bremen?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Buck?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we're gonna move into our second quasi judicial hearing. It's a request to approve a special event liquor permit application from the Fruit of Area Chamber of Commerce to sell beer at the Fruit of Fall Festival, What the Fest Brew Fest. Uh, Deb, you're up again.
Deb Woods, Deputy City Clerk. Another presentation on a, a special event liquor permit for Fruit of Fall Festival. This one is from the Fruit of Chamber of Commerce. Uh, this is for the What the Fest Brew Fest portion of Fall Fest at Civic Center Memorial Park on Friday, September twenty-fourth from five to ten PM. Uh, your council packet includes the event narrative, the diagram of the licensed premises, memorandum from the Fruit of Police Department that states there's nothing which would prohibit the issuance of the license requested. Safety plan that was submitted by the chamber to the Mesa County Health Department and the Health Department's approval letter of the Chamber's health and safety plan. Public hearing for this application was published in the Daily Sentinel on August twenty-eighth and posted at the location of the event on August twenty-seventh. Staff recommends approval of the Chamber's application for a special event liquor permit subject to the following conditions. One, that the Chamber will discontinue selling beer at nine thirty PM and the beer will be secured and removed by ten PM. Two, volunteers, board members, employees and higher security will monitor the entrances and exits to the licensed premises to ensure that no alcohol leaves or enters the licensed area. And three, that the Chamber needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for control of the licensed premises in regards to alcohol possession, consumption and adherence to state and local liquor laws. That concludes my presentation, and the Executive Director for the Chamber, Caleb Brown, is present tonight to answer any questions that you may have. Caleb, did you wanna?
Hello, I'm Caleb Brown. I live at seventeen forty-eight Ten Road in Mac, Colorado, and the Executive Director for the Fruit of Chamber. Uh, this year, the Fruit of Chamber has decided to invite some local breweries to join us for the Friday night session of Fruit of Fall Fest. It's our way of uh, not only helping additional fundraiser efforts for the Chamber, but also to include some of our local breweries uh, in those efforts and allow them to be part of the festival this year. Um, we're gonna have ten breweries serving and we'll have three different entrance points with volunteers checking IDs and um, giving out tickets and wristbands. We'll have Citadel Security hired onsite, um, and then to help with controlling each of those exit and entrance points. And other than that, um, do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, after I open it up for public comment. Thank you, Caleb. With that, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions for Caleb or Deb? All right, do we have a motion then?
Move, we approve the application from the Fruit of Area Chamber of Commerce to sell beer at the Fruit of Fall Festival, What the Fest on Friday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, from five uh, PM to ten PM at the Civic Center Memorial Park located at three twenty-five East Aspen. Avenue is subject to the conditions laid out in the packet.
My second.
Council Bremen?
Yes.
Council Buck?
Yes.
Council Leonhart?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Cry?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you. Don't go too far. Um, and so our third uh, quasi judicial uh, hearing is a request to approve a special event liquor permit application from the Fruit of Area Chamber of Commerce to sell beer at the Fruit of Fall Festival Cornhole Tournament.
Attorney and Counsel, Deb Woods, Deputy City Clerk, giving staff's uh, presentation on the Chamber's application for the uh, cornhole tournament that will be held at Reed Park as part of Fruit of Fall Festival on Saturday, September twenty-fifth from eleven AM to six PM. The council packet contains all the documents provided by the Chamber that are required to obtain a special event liquor permit. Including the event narrative, diagram of the licensed premises, memorandum from the Fruit of Police Department that states that there is nothing which would prohibit the issuance of the license. Health and safety plans submitted by the Chamber to the Mesa County Health Department and the Health Department's approval letter. Uh, the public hearing for this application was published in the Daily Sentinel on August twenty-eighth, posted on, at the location of the event on August twenty-seventh. Staff recommends approval of the Chamber's application for a special event liquor permit, subject to the following conditions. One, the Chamber will discontinue selling beer at five thirty PM and the beer will be secured and removed by six PM. Volunteers, board members, employees and higher security will monitor the entrances and exits to the licensed premises to ensure that no alcohol leaves or enters the area. And the Chamber needs to be aware that they're solely responsible for control of the licensed premises. That concludes my presentation. Uh, Caleb, anything you want to add?
I just wanted to add that we have asked the Rotary to control the beer garden at the Cornhole Tournament in Reed Park. Um, so as they stated, they uh, have control of the, the crowd and making sure that um, nobody's taking alcohol in or out during Saturday at the Cornhole Tournament Reed Park.
All right, thank you. With that, I'm gonna open up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item?
Lou Mudd, I live at one twenty-six South Maple Street. Um, this was a, a new event for the Fall Fest and the, the Chamber uh, was looking for an organization to serve the beer at the event. They uh, submitted the application for the permit and the Rotary Club has opted to use that as an opportunity for some fundraising for ourselves to serve beer at that. It's a fairly small event. I think they've got uh, twenty uh, games set up and hope for, to have uh, or that make eighty teams or something to that effect. So, yeah, should be a fun afternoon. Uh, we'll serve beer until probably just a couple kegs of beer until it's gone. Uh, it's not gonna be huge. Again, not a big time beer drinking festival, but the opportunity for those playing the game and spectators to have a few beers rather watching the tournament and playing in the tournament.
All right, is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions on this item?
I guess I'll recuse myself again.
All right.
Since I'm a member of the club.
Mister Ma- Mister Mayor, I move, we approve the application from the Fruit of Area Chamber of Commerce. Sell beer at the Fruit of Fall Festival Cornhole Tournament on Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one from eleven AM to six PM at Reed Park. Located two fifty South Elm Street, subject to the following conditions as laid out in the staff report.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who seconded.
I'll second.
Thank you. Council Bremen?
Yes.
Council Cry?
Yes.
Council Buck? Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, then our fourth quasi judicial hearings are request to prove a special event liquor permit application from the Fruit of Area Chamber of Commerce to sell malt, vinous and spiritus at the Fruit of Fall Festival Wine and Whiskey Tent.
Hey, uh, Mayor and City Council, this um, special event liquor permit application was submitted by the Fruit of Area Chamber of Commerce for a wine and whiskey tent at the Fruit of Fall Festival has been withdrawn by uh, the Chamber. Because the, the public hearing for this application was published in the Daily Sentinel on August twenty-eighth and the location of the event on August twenty-seventh, staff needed to include this uh, presentation on the public hearings agenda so that the public knows that it was withdrawn. There were, there were a couple of different reasons why the Chamber decided to, to withdraw this application. I'll probably just let Caleb address that, and that concludes my presentation. There really isn't a motion that needs to go along with this, but.
But some of us are disappointed, and we'd like to know why.
All right, did you wanna say anything, Caleb, or?
I'm kidding.
All right, with that, then.
I'm disappointed, but you don't have to tell. We can go out for drinks later and you can tell me why.
You can talk about it at What the Fest.
Yeah, exactly.
So, all right, with that, we're gonna move into our administrative agenda. Uh, so first item is our total maximum daily load uh, appeal. And we've got Kimberly Bullen, our Public Works Director, and Paul Weiser, our City Attorney here.
I think as, as Mayor, as Paul's walking up, I'll, I'll just give a quick intro. At your first meeting in August, you received a, an update about, about the subject from Mesa County and their consultant with SGM. So we weren't going, unless you have questions, Kimberly's here to answer any questions. But we weren't going to go over that overview again, but if you remember in that overview, the county talked about there would be a date at which they need to submit the appeal and would like us to join them in that appeal. So tonight, um, we have our City Attorney, Paul Weiser, to give you an overview of, of what that means. Um, the appeal is due tomorrow. And uh, so he was gonna give you a quick rundown of that and uh, and answer any questions you may have.
Here's, is, I'm not writing that appeal. So the county has uh, taken a lead on this appeal. Well, first of all, does anyone have any questions substantive? The county has taken a lead on the appeal. They've uh, agreed to pay thirty thousand dollars for that appeal. Realistically, it's probably gonna cost five to fifteen thousand dollars, five to twenty thousand dollars more. So um, between the other entities who are involved, we're probably looking for another twenty thousand dollars. Certainly need a commitment, dollar commitment from council tonight, but uh, as we go forward, I think there will be an expectation that we do put some money into that, uh, perhaps a proportionate share vis a vis the other participants, um, which uh, would be at least, I'll say irrigation dicks. Another consortium and uh, so at least three, a three-way split. The appeal, um, you know, is due tomorrow. It can take some time for appeals to work themselves out. But this is an appeal to the Water Commissioners rather than to the Court of Appeals. Um, so there's more of an impetus to get this moving, given the importance of the issue at hand. Um, so it's gonna be a different track than some other appeals would be. Uh, and so really what we're looking for tonight is your assent uh, to participate in the appeal. I will be honest that in order to take a look at the appeal, I had to sign a um, agreement to join in the appeal but made clear that um, my agreement to do so was contingent upon this conversation.
All right, who has questions?
What are our chants? She needs to come up and do a thirty-minute presentation.
I don't know, Heather asked you a question, you know, what, what is the probability of um, us succeeding in the outcome? And you know, honestly, I, I think that we have a good case to make. Um, if nothing else, there's some procedural issues in terms of um, the period of notice that we had in order to make comment. I don't think that we were provided all of the opportunity we were afforded under relevant rules and regulations. Um, so I think that argument in and of itself is a good one. But um, as I've come to learn, uh, the obvious answer is not always what a court will give you, so.
So do you just need us to like read one of these options? Is that what works? It's not a motion.
Make it, it's a motion.
It is a motion. Yeah, we need a motion, cause.
Okay, so, is there any, sorry.
No, if nobody else has any comments, go ahead and make that.
So then I move to join Mesa County and GBWA as petitioner in the Notice of Appeal and Request for a judi- judicatory? hearing to be filed before September 9th pursuant to Regulation 24, 21.4. B. If a party is named as petitioner, the organization will be listed in the header of the notice and will be identified as one of the entities requesting the hearing. Second.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, again.
First time for me, yes.
You all have everyone. I have confirmed that the cornhole term is a bracket format, right?
Perfect.
Oh, no, but no whiskey tent, sorry.
No whiskey.
Now that that's been approved, let me ask a question. Going to be able to have people attend, are we planning on attending the press conference tomorrow morning at 10:00?
So we have quite a few conflicts, but we do have Kimberly Bullen is able to attend. If a council member is not able to attend, I was going to ask that during my update tonight, but this is a great time.
How about we go to city manager report? Go ahead. Mike, did you want to start with that one?
All right, we'll start with that one. Mayor, members of council, the Grand Junction Chamber of Commerce is working on a, has set up a press conference for tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. at the Redlands Boat Launch, and it's a mixture of they're inviting representatives from the municipalities, the county, and businesses who are, because this is affecting quite a few people in our area if this appeal does not succeed. And they already have the speakers, so they're not asking for any, I've confirmed with them today, they're not asking for anybody from Fruta to speak. I think Representative Soper and a couple other people are speaking, but they want to show the support valleywide. And so did want to offer, see if there if there's anybody that would like to attend to show support. Again, we had, we have talking points ready. However, they did confirm we would not be speaking, we'd just be be there to show support. So I don't know if anybody has the opportunity to be there at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow at the Redlands Boat Launch for probably about a 30-minute period of time.
I may be able to make that one.
Okay. We've rearranged some schedules, so we can have somebody there.
Kimberly didn't have to present for a half hour tonight, so she should have a half hour tomorrow.
Yeah.
The other updates I have is that, as we discussed in the in the workshop last week, we have invited and have confirmations from Andrew Ashley, who is with the Department of Housing, who is highly recommended for to, and somebody that working for the Department of Housing with the Department of Local Affairs to be able to give us a presentation, give council a presentation and answer questions. He is available both two weeks from now to present at the regular meeting or at the workshop. We also have Jen Kermode, who is the Gunnison Housing Authority. So as we were talking with CHAF and Department of Housing, they suggested that another housing authority, which we've already had Richard Guthur, so we thought we'd go with a, have another speaker. So she is confirmed to be there, and then possibly Andy Hill with Department of Local Affairs as well. So my question to you all would be, are you interested in having, we could do it two ways. We could have the speakers at the workshop and then also have a discussion, or we could also invite them to speak in two weeks at this meeting during administrative updates, be able to ask and answer questions, but then also continue discussion on this subject matter at the workshop. So we can do either, and just wanted to see if you had any preference on that.
What's our schedules look like on both those days right now?
We do have, we do have a, the workshop, we kick off the budget, which typically doesn't take, you know, 30 to about 30 minutes, 20 to 30 minutes, because it's not a, it's kind of overview of the highlights and the reminder of the schedule that starts. And then every meeting from that point forward, we have more detailed presentations. And then we do need to continue talking about our housing strategy. So we would, either way, we would still continue that discussion at the workshop. At the the meeting in two weeks, I believe we do have a land use item, and we do have, going blank now, trying to remember, we have, yeah, it's a fairly, it's, it's, it's a full agenda.
Okay.
Maybe that answers the question.
I probably recommend we do it at workshop.
Okay.
All right. And then we, you probably, you might have seen, but unfortunately, someone did drive into one of the roundabouts. Unfortunately, there doesn't seem to be any damage to any of the sculptures. There's some crack in the wall, and one of the lights for the solar lights is is out. So we're working on that. And then that happened either late Sunday night or early Monday morning, I believe. And then.
How many years did we not have sculptures?
This is why.
And then the last item is, while we're still working on the the longer term of getting forms translated and those things that we'll be working on into next year, we did, we did at least add a first step of Google Translate to the website. It was a simple option that isn't always 100%, but it does help in translating everything on the website in multiple languages. So we're, we got that on there, and then we're continuing to work on the more permanent updates moving forward. That's everything I have tonight.
All right, thank you, Mike. With that, we're going to move into our council reports and actions. So I'm going to start here with Kyle.
I have nothing to report at this time.
All right, Karen.
All right. So the GBT met recently. But it's just one thing to keep on your radar, because it's this greenhouse gas reduction proposal by the governor. They're going to, they're not starting to measure for it until 2025. They're going to do a baseline to see where everybody is, and then they're going to set these targets that you're supposed to hit every five years, right? And fortunately for Mesa County, we're like, we're negligible in what we have and what we, I guess what their expectations are too. But it's just interesting. And then, you know, some of the measures that they're looking for, which I'm going to read these because like, we already do most of these things, but, you know, addition of transit resources, so it's infrastructure services and funding, improving pedestrian and bike access resources, emission reductions on construction projects, encouraging equitable transit-oriented development, improving first and final mile connections to transit, and encouraging more efficient vertical land use and parking. So those are the things that they're looking for, like the bigger cities to do. And we do some of these things already with just, you know, our our resources and for alternative transportation. I think we work pretty well with the entities to do that. But the kicker is, is that they will, I mean, there is an enforcement piece to this, and, you know, they can take away your funding. And when I asked the question about how is this measured, you said, well, we put this information into these models that kind of predict where you are or where you aren't. And a question prior to that was, well, how effective are these models? Well, you know, they're the best we have. And so the, I don't know, the whole thing just kind of made me go, hmm, but it's something that we're going to have started dealing with, but not until 2025. And at least for us over here, it's, the numbers are weird and very subjective, and so is the way you're rated. But heads up, it's coming our way, and it's something we'll all have to deal with eventually.
And I.
Right?
Yes, and I did just forward counsel an email from AGNC that just came out today about a briefing on this matter on Thursday that you can, that you can attend virtually if you if you like. So thanks.
That's it.
Well, we're going to go to Ken, because they just stole us.
There's an email here from AGNC that it sounds like they're going to be recording that meeting. If he can't make the meeting, we can distribute the recording and just informational, but there will be opportunities to provide testimony on that. If I hear of it before anybody else, I'll send it around. AGNC is also having an economic summit on Thursday, $75 for the food launch. I've been doing it before. They're, they're good if you're interested in economic development. And downtown board meets tomorrow, so off an update.
Not a whole lot to update. Did anyone have any questions on the Lake Fruta RV Resort conditional use permit, the application that was withdrawn, that was declined by planning commission? No questions at all? Okay. Well, all right.
GJEAP is in the process of looking for a new executive director, but on September 30th will be the annual GJEAP Economic Summit, which will be held at the university.
That one's usually better than the AGNC.
Tickets are also 75 bucks.
Lunch better?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if we, you haven't polled anybody on who wants to go to that yet, have you?
Yet. Matthew and I are signed up already as board members. We did sign up, but.
September 30th.
It includes, it goes, it includes a lunch, and there's various classes that you can attend as well.
Put me down. If anybody else does, we have to, what, public notice?
Well, yeah, there's three of you already.
We'll put it on the calendar anyway at this point.
All right. The only thing I've got is tourism, we're meeting on Thursday this week to do interviews on four candidates for the marketing fund. So we're going to, got one local agency and three out of the area agencies that we're going to be interviewing. So we'll keep you guys up to date on that, because it'll come back to council on what our recommendation is for that. Other than that, I've got a chamber board meeting tomorrow, and that's all I have on my list. So with that, we're going to move into an executive session. And so this is a discussion of possible action to consider a motion to convene an executive session regarding personnel issues under CRS Section 2464024F for the City Attorney's Formal Review. With that. Oh, yeah, we need a motion to move into an executive session.
Mayor, I move, we've moved to meet in executive session for the formal review attorney, which is discussion of personnel matter under color 6402 or F for the formal review attorney.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes.